I believe that they're on campus, and so we're just trying to get them inside along with our administrator.
Yeah, I think everybody's here.
Everybody's here, so if we would just, can they hear us?
I don't.
No?
Don't really hear.
We appreciate those who are present here with us tonight, along with those who may be viewing this online. It's been a long time since we have been together in person, at least for a council committee meeting. And so again, we are very appreciative for those who engage in the public process. Tonight, we have our audit committee meeting along with our public safety committee, planning and public works, and our regular finance committee agenda. Mr. Sasse is the chair of our audit committee, and as soon as Mr. Darby comes in, we will have a full audit committee. But we are willing to get started. Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item for this audit committee are Joe Boykin, Henry Darby, Brantley Moody, myself, and of course, the chairman. First item is approval of minutes for July 17th, 2025.
Any additions?
None, hearing none, thank you very much. Second item, agenda item, probate judge reimbursement. I'd like to report, I had several discussions with Judge Condon concerning the P card charges made by the judge and his staff. The items from the audit were the result of rules and procedures that were not followed and not theft. Judge Condon has paid the bill in full. I can say from personal experience that Judge Condon and his office do a great job for the citizens of Charleston County. Thank you very much, Judge Condon. Is there any more business to come before this committee? Mr. Moody?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Sasse, and all of council. We were pretty united on the need for that to be squared away, and you didn't let it go. And that was the right thing to do, so thank you for watching out for taxpayers, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else? Hearing none, this meeting's over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sasse, our public safety committee, Mr. Pryor is the chair.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is our public safety committee agenda. We have two items on the agenda. The members of this committee, myself is the chair, Joe Boykin, Henry Darby, and Jenny Costa Hanecat. The first audit business is approval of the minutes of June 5th, 2025. What is the pleasure?
So moved.
As they're moving seconded, any discussion, deletions, or addition? Ain't none all in favor of signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, even though item number 2A, Mr. Moody, that's not on this committee. He contacted me and asked that if this could be placed on this committee. And I'm gonna go and defer to Mr. Moody, and you can tell why you want this on this committee.
Thank you, Chairman Pryor, and I do appreciate, I'm not a member of this committee, but I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. As the title suggests, as I begin considering this ordinance, I spoke with a number of my council colleagues and found out that all of our urban unincorporated areas have problems with random gunfire. Bullets flying into homes on Long Point Road, Ames John's Island, North Charleston, certainly in West Ashley. I've also learned through discussions with our legal department that county sheriffs for years, well back into Sheriff Cannon's term, have been asking for help from county council. My urgency around this issue has heightened recently because in an unincorporated area in my district, homeowner in the unincorporated area of West Ashley, virtually surrounded by city of Charleston residents, has a gun range set up in his backyard. This home is close to a United Methodist church with a very active preschool, day school, that is just now back in session. At any particular time, day or night, weekday, weeknight, weekend, neighbors are hearing 10 to 20 clip automatic gunfire, literally in their backyard. So these neighbors call 911. And the city and the county deputies come flying into the area. The city leave when they find out the house is in the unincorporated area, and our sheriff's deputies are handcuffed because there's nothing for them to enforce. Maybe they can write a noise ordinance citation or something like that. But this is something I think we've really got to fix. This council, since I've been here, has tried to be uniform with our neighboring municipalities, whether it be zoning ordinances, noise ordinances, et cetera. We've always tried to align our laws so that they're seamless across lines. Doesn't matter what's in your trashcan is, the same rules apply the best we can. So I think this public safety measure is another step towards aligning our ordinances. The big three municipalities, to my knowledge, prohibit gunfire within their municipal boundaries, period. No exceptions. So with this in mind, I asked Ms. Hamm and Mr. Nysely to propose some ordinance language that will accomplish this uniformity of ordinances as it pertains to firearms in the urban unincorporated areas. And that is what the clerk emailed out to you earlier today. It's the first shot. I understand, though, the threading of the needle here is not impacting citizens who live in our very rural areas. They move out there for a reason. They don't have neighbors and businesses around, they live out there for a reason, so I hope that we don't impact them by this. But my ask tonight of the public safety committee would be to move this as presented with a second for our discussion. And at our next council meeting, the attorneys hopefully can take back the things that we talk about tonight, maybe try to make some changes and tweaks to the ordinance as it's written now, with amendments up to the third reading. I'm not 100% married to this document that you see before us, it's just a first draft. So that would be my ask of the public safety committee tonight. Thank you, Chairman Pryor.
All right, so is there a motion for discussion purposes?
I would like to move.
Okay, and I'll second it, I'll second it, so now we open for discussion. Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support Councilmember Moody's efforts in this. When we have donut holes, as they call them, it does create a lot of confusion, and these are urban areas. I mean, these are subdivisions with lots, and it doesn't make any sense to have this discrepancy in the rules for firearms discharge. My problem is, obviously, the majority of my district is out in the rural area, and I can't support this as written. You know, I want to put this quick quote in here. Section 25 of the South Carolina State Constitution reads as follows. Traditions of hunting and fishing are valuable parts of the state's heritage, important for conservation, and a protected means of managing non-threatening wildlife. The citizens of this state have the right to hunt, fish, and harvest wildlife traditionally pursued, subject to the laws and regulations providing, excuse me, sound wildlife conservation and management as prescribed by the General Assembly. Nothing in this section shall be construed to abrogate any private property rights, existing state laws or regulations, or the state's sovereignty over natural resources. There's some things in here about acreage requirements to be excused from this. There's no provisions for hunting. We have folks that they might have one acre, two acres, but they will put a pile of corn out and put up a deer stand, and they'll hunt. That's, gunshots are a normal thing in that area. They feed their families that way. They're in no way trying to be reckless or endangering anyone. So I do agree, Mr. Moody has an absolute valid point. This has been a problem for us, but I would ask one or two considerations, that either we restrict this ordinance to within the urban growth boundary, or we exclude all ag zone property, which all of that is outside the urban growth boundary, from these regulations. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Ms. Hanecat?
Mr. Moody, I may not fully understand the issue that you're having with your constituents, but is this not something that could be corrected through zoning? I mean, are people allowed to operate gun ranges in their backyards? Is there anything from zoning that can answer that?
Joe?
If it's a private, if it's your own, and you're in unincorporated Charleston County, like you're in the target in your backyard.
Interesting. Yeah.
You got Ms. Hanecat?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Kowalski?
I'm not on the committee, of course.
But you can speak, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Want to agree with what Councilman Boykin said. His district is much like mine, so I echo his sentiments, which he said very well. But I'd like to add, and I had some communication on this before, I appreciate Mr. Moody's concern, and I ask this to the attorney, would it not be possible, because these are donut holes in municipalities that have a right to control what goes on in their jurisdiction, to maybe draft it in the way that we could, where there's donut holes in urban areas, whether it's North Charleston or Mount Pleasant, that they would have to adhere to the ordinances of those towns that they're contiguous to, are within? I think might be because there may be some communities that want more conservative ones, less conservative ones, but it would be, I think it's within their boundaries that they would have a right to influence that because it affects the people that live around it, if that's a possible solution to this. That would make sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Kowalski, I hear your sentiments. I'll give you an example of why that won't quite work. Out at Ravenswood, we live on John's Island, the Stono River is the dividing line of our family property and the town of Hollywood. So all of our farm would be adjacent to a municipality, and I can't imagine us having to, you know, be in that situation. So I go back to having a more definitive boundary where we have, you know, if it's rural, it's rural. And the other issue is, as it's written now, let's say you got a neighbor that says, yeah, you can shoot your gun. They move out, and then somebody else comes and says, no, you can't. When we start letting neighbors decide what the other neighbors can do, we're putting people in conflict. And so, anyway, I just, I couldn't support that.
Well, good point, but I just meant to say, I meant in urban areas, I thought I made that clear. In rural areas, I'm in agreement with you, but in urban areas, if it's North Charleston, or the city of Charleston, or the town of Mount Pleasant, I still think if there's donut holes within those municipal boundaries, that they would have a great interest in what goes on within their boundaries. But I would agree that in the rural areas, it'd be inappropriate to begin with. So I just thought I made that distinction clear. Thank you.
Anybody else before we move on?
Mr. Pryor, just one more question on the zoning. Can we not designate within either this ordinance or the zoning, these things that are allowed or not allowed? I mean, would that be possible to say, like, for instance, if you're in R4, which is typically characterized as one, four houses per acre, you can't shoot next to your neighbor, they're less than a few hundred feet away. In some cases, the houses might be right next to each other. I'm just wondering if there's a way to, like, very specifically capture it, only because the UGB, while we want it to not move, it's still kind of a fluid line, so to speak, and so I want to make sure there's something clear that if we're going to impose this, that it, we know who it applies to. That would be my thought.
Well, we already have some ordinances with, like, trash pickup, code enforcement with some of these municipalities. So it might be feasible, say, for instance, in North Charleston, the city of Charleston, or Mount Pleasant, just to add that to the current, amend what we have now, and add this no guns in that particular area because it's in the urban area and it's unincorporated, you know, not the municipalities like out in the rural area. Say, for instance, in North Charleston, they do code enforcement, and we give them authority to write tickets up to their uniform with the code because we don't have enough people to do it now. So would it make sense for us to say, okay, we want to add this too? You can't shoot a firearm inside this because, you know, we are following North Charleston rules. Give them the authority to manage that, and then that takes out, you know, all the what-else and what's-that. Because I will tell you, if you go on Lee's Avenue, right across the street over here, there's three or four houses that are in the unincorporated area of Charleston County. They can't vote in the city municipal election, but North Charleston picks up their trash, and they can use the recreations because that's the agreement that we have. So if we would somehow maybe look at it, Ms. Hamm, and just amending the agreement that we have with these municipalities now, including no discharging of firearm within city limits. Mr. Darby, and Mr. Boykin?
I just want to say something about Mr. Boykin's suggestion. I mean, it almost appears as if it's to say that all people who live in the rural areas are in favor of discharging guns. I don't think that'd be the case. Well, first of all, I commend Mr. Moody for the courage, I mean, to bring this up. I really do, sir. That's what I told Ms. Pryor when I first read it.
Dangerous, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it says here, it shall be unlawful for any person in the unincorporated areas of the county to discharge a firearm within 1,000 feet of any building. I think that's quite gracious. A thousand feet? So, I mean, just help me to understand.
Mr. Darby, I advise you to come meet my neighbors out there. They hunt, and they can't afford 25 acres of land on John's Island. You've priced it lately, it's kind of expensive, and they've been generational handed down, and they-
All of them?
Some of them.
Okay.
But they feed their families. I shoot deer and take them and drop them off at their house and so forth.
Chicken, sir, so I feed my family too, sir.
Well, some folks eat wild food, you know, and so I just can't imagine telling somebody they can hunt and provide for their families and do recreational shooting on their own property, and now we're getting ready to wrestle that away from them. They live in the country for a reason. If they want to be in the city, they'd move to the city, and I agree, it's absolutely appropriate where Mr. Pryor and Mr. Moody are talking about. But these are country folks. We live out there, we like our lifestyle, and the right to hunt is a constitutional right in this state, you know? And so DNR handles it, they have safety regulations in place for hunting close to a residence and the requirements that go with it. The state's already fixed this stuff in my area. And that's why I go back to Ms. Hanecat's point, you know, the urban growth boundary could get moved, but as long as we leave AGR, AG8, AG10, AG15, and Resource Management, I may be missing one, that are these large tracts and these rural tracts out of this, I can get behind it. But I can't represent the folks I represent until I'm taking their right to hunt in the yard or the land away because it's next to a town of Ravenel, or the town of Hollywood, or town of Megget, you know, because these other municipalities are out there. And, but I agree with the big three, you know, Charleston, Mount Pleasant, and North Charleston. So there's a way I can support this, I just need to make sure my folks don't lose their ability to use and enjoy the property.
And I don't think Mr. Moody is saying that. I don't want nobody to leave here today thinking that you're trying to take somebody's second amendment rights away from them. Because, let me finish, please, sir. Because, you know, people spin things and they spin it in the wrong way. Everybody has a right to possess a firearm, but what Mr. Moody is saying is, and everybody has a right to hunt. But you don't want some jackrabbit going around and just, you know, just shooting there to be shooting. And I think that's what Mr. Moody is trying to do. You know, honest, good, honest people and good people, they're going to do what's right. But it's the ones that not going to do it sometime, you have to have regulations in place. So please, anybody, don't leave from here today saying, Mr. Moody, Mr. Pryor, Mr. Darby, or whoever is trying to take away somebody's gun right because, or hunting right, because I don't think that's what's intended.
No, sir, absolutely not.
But I would wish that maybe we would allow the attorney to go to these three municipalities and see if we can incorporate what we have now as far as, you know, the internal government agreement we have now with them enforcing the law. And return that over to them through internal government agreement, and then that will eliminate what Mr. Moody is trying to do, and it wouldn't have to go through what you are trying to avoid to do. Yes, sir.
Clear, I do not make any statement that any of y'all intend to take anyone's rights.
No, not you.
No, but I mean, but that's not the point I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make is that maybe perhaps an unintentional consequence of this would be the restriction or loss of those rights. That's all I meant when I said-
I want to make sure we don't do that, but, Mr. Moody, would you be amicable to having our attorney reach out to these other municipalities to see if they would allow us to give them that?
Yes, sir, Chairman Pryor, and thank you for that. Not only that, I've seen Ms. Hamm over there taking notes. I think even more importantly is trying to figure out a way to incorporate these council members' comments into it. And I think there's a general sentiment that in the urban areas, this is bad behavior that needs to be somehow regulated, whether it be zoning, something like this, or whatever. Nobody wants to take those rights away out in the rural area, so, you know, I don't know what the, you know, it's been motioned and seconded. I don't know if we need to move that forward. I'm not on the committee, so y'all figure that out. But I've seen Ms. Hamm making notes, and I would love for her and Mr. Nysely to try to go tomorrow, Monday, whatever, and come back and talk with council members and get each of our opinions and say, you know, is this something that may satisfy you? Because I would love for us to be something that we can have a strong majority behind.
Okay, I think what we can do, and Ms. Salisbury, you know, if I'm out of order, you tell me, but just maybe just direct Ms. Hamm to go out and get that information and bring it back to us for consideration. You know, if the chairman wants to withdraw his motion, I withdraw my second, and then as the chair of this committee, I'll direct Ms. Hamm to go out and get that information and bring it back to us in a timely manner, not, you know, two months, but two weeks. Is that okay, Chairman? Do you-
Maybe for the next committee meeting, that'd be-
Next committee meeting, we can do that. And, Mr. Sasse?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pryor.
You might have been quiet today, so I'm glad to hear you talking.
Yeah, I was a little quiet, I was listening. I don't know, I know you remember, I've been through this a few times before.
Yes, sir.
We've had some discharge of firearms over off Long Point Road, and from one subdivision to another, and into somebody's living room. And another one over on Billy Swales Boulevard, and we tried to work with the town of Mount Pleasant to see if we could come up with something to do this. I think the great idea is to get Ms. Hamm working on this, to talk to municipalities. We did talk with the town of Mount Pleasant the last time. There's somebody over there that has a range in a donut hole right near a school, and that upset a lot of people. It's just because they don't have bad intentions, but people can still get hurt.
Right.
Or killed, and so I think that I'm pleased to see that we're headed in this direction, and I want to make sure that Chief Ritchie is involved with y'all about this as well.
Sheriff, sheriff.
I think the sheriff, yeah, he should be involved too, so thank you very much.
Okay, so is that, you good with that, Mr. Moody?
Thank you for the discussion, this is good, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, because I remember that it was somewhere west of Ashley out there that they were at this boat landing, and they were out there shooting up, and this guy was an ex-marine, and he came to us saying that, you know, he felt threatened with him and his family. So, okay, well, we will rely on the attorney to come back and accept us at our next committee meeting. Thank you, Ms. Hamm. And as far as to be code enforcement in the unincorporated area in Charleston County, Mr. Darby and I was at a neighborhood association meeting on Tuesday. We get to go once a year during August because we don't have any meetings, you know, they always have this on a third Tuesday. But anyway, a lot of questions was asked, and our code enforcement does have an agreement with the city of North Charleston in place right now to enforce, you know, the city's regulation on these folks in an incorporated area that has all these trash and these stuff in the yard to write a ticket. But the problem was, I think after Judge Coker left, the incoming judge decided, well, the magistrate, I'm not going to enforce this, you know, from North Charleston because she didn't thought she had the authority to do that. And so Ms. Hamm, here again, if you would get with the magistrate, the chief magistrate, I think it's Ms. Sami now, well, wherever her last name is, I forgot, you know, but if you would get with her and make sure that they could go to a court that would enforce this, it doesn't have to be any particular court, but if it's a ticket is written in North Charleston, then, you know, we can do it because that's the agreement that's already in place. That, you know, because I spoke to Ms. McJunkin, who was over code enforcement, and she said the agreement is still in place. But we just got to find, you know, somebody to say, well, I'm going to enforce this.
For all three, or is that just North Charleston?
Well, it could be all three, but I mean, mainly, most of the complaint were in North Charleston. And when you go to these meetings, it's confusing to some of the people. All they know is, you know, I pay taxes, I pay taxes, but you're actually in the city of North Charleston, but they're in North Charleston sometimes, blaming the county. But when Joe posed out the map and showed them, oh, it is in North Charleston, then, you know, they began to get a different attitude. But it's a lot of, you know, accusations and accusing, you know, us of not wanting to do anything when we've done our part and to the best of our ability. But, you know, I've got Mr. Carter working on some things on timelines because one of the ladies said, y'all haven't been to meetings since 2017. It wasn't, no, in 17 years, that's because I had to leave early. Well, I just took this district over in 2022. So I couldn't have been there 17 years ago, I mean, you know, when I wasn't even representing that district. Okay, Vic Rawl was there, and then I think the chairman took it over after Vic Rawl.
I went to the meeting.
So people got short-term memory. So, but anyway, I'm going to get all that chronological stuff in order, and I'm going to present it to them at the meeting, you know, so that way people can have an idea because I don't want anybody to accuse us of not coming in because we have worked too hard in those areas, you know, to help folks. Mr. Moody?
I would say similar to A. I mean, if, in my situation where there's gunfire in an incorporated area, if there's some kind of IGA, I don't know if it's even legal, that would let the city of Charleston, if they're there, the first responders, if they would be able to police that issue. She's, she doesn't like the look on me. I'm asking. Those are questions I would like to know too, because, you know, if it's the big three, I mean, if, you know, if the city, if the town of Mount Pleasant police are the first to respond, you know, they shouldn't have to turn out a lead because it's not in there, because it's in a donut hole, let's let them work it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Boykin, and there we go, wrap this up.
Just another concern, I mean, you know, there is lawful jurisdiction, and so the cities are only able to enforce laws within their jurisdiction. This would be extra, or outside of their area. So the county deputies have obviously authority throughout the entire county within the municipalities. So I don't know, and the constitution and the state confers those authorities, and as a state law enforcement officer, they can do it anywhere in the state. I don't know that this is our lane to navigate. I think the proper protocol would be, is if a city officer responded, saw the violation was in the county, they call the sheriff's office, and the deputy sheriff handles the matter, because that'd be proper.
But if we got an IGA and police, you know, you could eliminate that because-
I don't know that fixes it, but I'm-
Yeah, she can let her figure it out and then get back to us. Is that okay with anybody? Okay, all right, that concludes our public safety agenda meeting. And so now we move into planning and public works agenda, where we have two items on the agenda. All members of council participate. Item number one is approval of minutes-
Move for approval, second.
All right, any deletion additions? Ain't none all in favor of signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. This is a request from the Parkus Ferry Community Fund Overland District. What is the pleasure?
Do approve, sir.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moody, any discussion? All in favor of signifying, all right.
I'd just like to-
Kent, hey.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I'd like to hear the staff's presentation on this again, about why they're for it.
Yeah, if they're coming up, isn't this the one where the landowner went to all the neighbors and the surrounding community and told them what they had, he made changes, the neighbors came out during public comment last time and said, hey, we're all in support of this thing? Because of the engagement, I think I even made a remark that that was typical of how a good public engagement process should go.
Yeah, and that's in Mr. Boykin's district, and it's out there where that old tire place used to be and all that, so they did come here. Did you do, you remember that, Mr. Kowalski?
This is, you know, a public hearing, and we're going to vote on it.
Not a public hearing, this is a public meeting.
Not a public hearing, I meant the meeting of the councils of public-
They've already had the public hearing.
I wasn't referring to as a public hearing in the literal sense. I mean, this is a public meeting of the county council, we're going to make a decision, and that's just to briefly put it on the record again, I think is-
Let me ask you this question, anything specific you want to see taken out of this?
I just want to know if there was any opposition since the last meeting to this that's-
Okay, let's ask her that question. Any oppositions from the last meeting?
We haven't received any opposition since the last meeting, since the public hearing.
Any other concern, Mr. Kowalski?
I have none.
Okay, and would you send a copy of that to Mr. Kowalski if he had done that one, so he can look through it for Tuesday? If you got any more questions, you can ask it on Tuesday.
Sure, we'll get you a copy of the presentation.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, that concludes our planning and public works committee agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor. We're now ready to move into our finance committee meeting, where all members of council are members of the finance committee. Item one, approval of minutes from the-
Prove.
Probably moved and seconded, all of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses nay, the eyes have it. We're going to have two presentations, Capital Projects update and a FEMA transition update. Mr. Beveridge?
All right. Hey, council members, I'm Michael Beveridge, Director of Capital Projects. Appreciate the opportunity to give you guys a Capital Projects update. Currently, Capital Projects is managing three vertical construction efforts in design and construction. That's the Azalea Complex Main, Phase Two, which I appreciate everybody coming this morning for that ribbon cutting, the Tri-County Biological Science Center, and also Azalea EMS, Phase Four. We'll walk through schedule, budget, and delivery status for each project. So this is just to get oriented, most of these projects are right in this zone. We have the Azalea Complex, which is right here, that's Azalea Complex Main, between Azalea, or right there, Azalea Headquarters, and Lead- We have the Azalea Complex, which is right here. That's Azalea Complex Main between Azalea, or right there at Azalea Headquarters and Leeds Avenue. We have Tri-County, which is right there on Leeds Avenue and Brickyard Creek Road. And then Azalea Complex EMS Phase Four, which is on the southern end of the Azalea campus at Azalea Drive. So the first component here is going to be Azalea Complex Main, Phase Two. This project is for facilities, public works, and emergency management. It is six buildings that total around 121,000 square feet to serve the public. The end users are public works led by DCA Thickpen, Facilities Director Phil Sabatino, and Emergency Management Justin Pierce. Project management team from Capital Projects is myself and Meredith Ellinger. I'd like to introduce you guys to Meredith. Meredith joined my team about six months ago, and she's been a great asset. This is a design-build contract led by the prime contractor Trident Construction. So this is a little close-up of that campus. We have the buildings there with all the white roofs. And we're going to go on to the overall project status. So this project really shows what's possible with disciplined design and construction to align with clear scope and returning savings to the county. Facility has received its certificate of occupancy and is delivered ahead of a schedule and under budget. All vertical construction and inspections are complete. Final commissioning, in-user training, and operational readiness are underway. Small business enterprise participation reached 21.9%. And minority and women-owned business enterprises' participation reached 7.3%. Sustainability goals are on track as we enter into the Green Globe certification process. Moving on to schedule for this, as many of you guys know, we received our certificate of occupancy yesterday and had our ribbon cutting today. So this project is really in its reconciliation of the GMP phase. And we are transitioning to in-user relocation next week. The financial status of this project, financially, Phase Two has performed with strong discipline. This council and previous council approved this project for 65 million. We're currently tracking between 63.3 million and 64.5 million for our final cost. Owner contingency remains intact, and no additional funding is requested at this time. In my opinion, this is a model of scope alignment and delivery. Got some pictures here for you guys. These updated visuals highlight building exteriors, interior finishes, and full site completion, showcasing quality construction, modern systems, and readiness to support county operations for decades. The administration building is classified as an essential facility designed to remain operational before, during, and after major events with a resilience to 156 mile per hour sustained winds, which is equivalent to the top category four hurricane. There's the inside of the building. The flanking shops buildings are engineered to 145 mile per hour sustained winds, meeting the upper threshold of a category three hurricane, ensuring durability and continuity of our county services. Moving on to the next project, we have the Tri-County Biological Science Center. This lab serves as a regional need across Charleston, Berkeley, and Dorchester Counties. Capital Projects is managing the design and construction with strong collaboration from Public Safety Directorate and Forensics Science Team. The in-user is Tom. Is Tom in the room today? Also managed by the Capital Projects Group, myself and Meredith. The prime contractor in this project is Contract Construction. Again, this project is on the corner of Leeds Avenue and Brickyard Creek Road, right near the juvenile detention center. This is the schedule. I feel like I skipped a spot. There we go. So on this project, we're approximately 65% complete and we're progressing steadily. Interior finishes are underway. Exterior panels are going up, and all major trades are bought out in the GMP process. Small business enterprise participation is at 12.3%. And minority and women-owned business enterprises' participation has reached 20.3%. Sustainability goals are on track with Green Globe certification in progress. The timeline shows we're on track for substantial completion in December of this year and full contract closeout by the year end. GMP was set in May 2024, and the team has held that line without any major scope changes to date. Financially, this council approved $29 million total budget for this project, total budget. We've contracted currently 24.1 million and spent just over 14 million as of July. The owner contingency is preserved. While it's early to predict final savings, we're tracking to be within budget without deviation and savings as anticipated. Got some pictures here. So these visuals show the exterior panel installation and interior lab areas in progress. The team conducts weekly quality inspections to ensure timely completion, durability of building systems. There we go. This has been a really exciting project. You guys have seen it. It's been going up very quickly. All right. And this is the first time this council has seen the Azalea Complex Phase Four EMS headquarters. This is currently in design development, so still in the design phase. We just completed schematic design last month. The facility will centralize EMS operations, admin, logistics, academy, and training under one roof for the long-term growth and readiness. The end users for this project is Public Safety Lauren Knapp. EMS leadership is Kim Nguyen, Jim Cialli, Charles Milliken, Nathaniel Bialik, and Carl Fair. And also DCA Eric Watson, Public Safety. Is managed by Capital Projects, myself and Meredith. And the design-build contractor prime is Trident Construction. This is the current site plan for the project. As you can see, it's a very large building, housing a lot of ambulance undercover to preserve them for emergencies and also increase their durability and lifespan. Key milestones are aligned. The target GMP will be set early in 2026. That's our target. Demolition and site work will begin this fall with early release packages. We're currently in negotiations to start potentially in September, October of this year. We're working closely with procurement on that currently. Vertical construction will begin next year pending this council's GMP approval. The budget remains at 80 million. The active costs, we are currently in active cost management, and we are trying to align contingency escalation and design refinement. This is a very complex site. It is what's called a VCC site, an entire cleanup contract with DES. So we are doing our best to mitigate those risks for the county. Here's the project timeline. This really shows the permitting process takes a good bit of time for projects. So this slide walks through design phases, permitting, and early site activities. So currently, environmental cleanup and demolition are our next steps. We are building smarter by resolving environmental risks and financial exposure before a shovel hits the ground for vertical construction. Our target occupancy currently, and I say target, is Q4 2028. To date, we've spent just over $600,000 and encumbered roughly 4 million for design and environmental scopes. The contingency will be set with the target GMP and no change in budget or further requests at this time. Here's some renderings, the renderings of the facility from multiple angles. As we kind of develop this project through design development, we will be sure to update this council with more visuals as it becomes more real. And with that, I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Just one quick question, Chairman.
Mr. Pryor?
So are these two buildings here going to be able to stand 145 mile an hour wind resistance?
All the other ones, other than the admin? Yes, they are all built to that standard.
Good.
Including the covered open air sheds.
Good, because we got our DNA lab. We don't want that to be blown down. Yeah, we're being a mess. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Beveridge, let me just applaud you, your team, certainly Mr. Thickpen, Mr. Adams, and the beautiful, beautiful, beautiful building that we cut the ribbon for today. I have been more than impressed, you know, with just the design. I mean, we see it, you know, in the renderings and the pictures. But going in it physically is just breathtaking. And so it's a beautifully designed building. The space is more than functional. And it's going to be a brand-new home where you all will be able to be more efficient, be able to provide those services with excellence. You're already doing that with excellence, but you're on top of one another in your current location, and you'll have more than enough space to grow. And so just thank you all just for the ongoing commitment to delivering these projects under budget and then on time. And so again, we applaud you, and we continue to ask you to keep doing the same thing with all the buildings that are online. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Thickpen, since they saved all that money, are y'all going to have a, like a celebration party or something for us to come in and have lunch?
Check with, check.
Don't chatter.
He should have taken procurement 101 along with me, so don't even answer him.
That's a trick question.
That's already one of those questions that will get you publicly in trouble. All right, the FEMA, FEMA transition update. Thank you so much.
So hello again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members and colleagues. Thank you for inviting me back to talk to you about updates to all the reform that's being discussed with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and what it means to hear to our community in Charleston. We are approaching the end of August. We are getting through hurricane season. Coming up on September, which is historically the more active month of hurricanes. And I really appreciate that I'm up here talking about this and not about a pending hurricane coming to our area. We have 101 days left of hurricane season, not that I'm counting or anything. On a serious note, though, right now with FEMA, the changes that are being discussed at the federal level remain the same, which is to push down traditional disaster response and recovery capabilities to state and local governments. That includes operational functions and costs associated with that as well. Today, what we'll do is we'll go through an overall view of those nine action items that you have previously approved and our status updates on those. I brought members of the department here tonight to brief you on those. It's been a very collaborative effort, not within just the emergency management department, but various county departments as we work through these nine items. The path forward, oh, excuse me, right now with FEMA, there are two paths that you need to be aware about. One is the FEMA Review Council, which the president assembled shortly after his administration. He has given the FEMA Review Council until middle of November to come back with some recommendations on what the future of FEMA should look like. That committee continues to meet. The next meeting's in a couple of weeks. They've been going throughout the entire country, having committee meetings and listening sessions, getting feedback from stakeholders at all levels of government. In addition to that, there is a second stream going on right now, which the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure has already proposed and drafted a bill on the floor right now that has not been brought to the floor for a vote. But it's been drafted on changes, proposed changes to FEMA, which include moving it outside the Department of Homeland Security, making it a cabinet-level agency. They also adjust some of the disaster recovery thresholds in which state and local governments can seek federal assistance. I anticipate more changes to that bill. To me, I don't think this is going to be called for a vote until the FEMA Review Council comes out with their recommendations. And right now, it's anyone's guess how closely that existing bill is going to mirror the recommendations that come from the FEMA Review Council. So it is a guessing game still right now. When we spoke last time, I talked about how the Building Resiliency Infrastructure Grant, or the BRIC grant, was placed on hold. That continues to be the case as there has been a couple of states that have proposed some legal challenges. So right now, that's continuing to work through the legal system. Fortunately for us, I think we only have about $200,000 from that grant that's being impacted right now. So what is the path forward? The bottom line is counties and municipalities can adapt to these changes, but we're going to need time to plan. We're going to need time to budget, and we're going to need time to staff up based upon those changes. So the message here to our congressional representatives, to our state elected officials, is that change is great, but we need time at the state and local levels to adjust to those changes. Don't make those sweeping changes very quickly because there's no way that we'll be able to keep those operational capabilities where they need to be if something just were to roll out overnight. The next piece to this is that we need to prepare and start to have a comprehensive strategy to support disaster survivors in our community. These are items that FEMA has already started to express the need to pull away from. So we need to start thinking about ahead about disaster housing, food, and water. Door-to-door canvassing, which FEMA has already made it very, very clear they are not going to do. That's a gap that we and our state partners are going to have to fill. And then also disaster recovery centers, which are locations that are stood up after a disaster to link individuals and survivors with assistant programs. Traditionally, that's been a function that FEMA has fulfilled. They're backing out from that. So that's another gap that we're going to have to somehow find a solution for. So next, we'll move into the action items. These are the nine action items that you previously approved. We'll go through here one by one with an update, some that I'll give and some members of my department. Starting first with Chase Miller, and she'll talk about the update to our emergency operations plan.
Hi, good evening. My name's Chase Miller. I am an emergency management specialist with Charleston County Emergency Management, and I'm going to be the project lead on our comprehensive overhaul of our emergency operations plan, or our EOP. I'd like to provide an update on the comprehensive rewrite. This will be an effort to completely rewrite instead of just a routine update to our EOP. Really, the goals for this is to modernize our emergency operations center, or EOC, and structure it to make sure that people understand their assignments and understand their responsibilities. We also want to continue to address disaster response and recovery gaps, especially if the way that FEMA is rolling is the way that they continue to. We want to make sure that we're filling in those gaps both at the county levels and at the local level. We also want to make sure that we're building and ensuring that Charleston County has a more resilient plan that's capable to respond to all hazards that threaten our. All applications are due from consultants on September 30th. The RFQ actually went up this morning, so we are taking questions up until September 2nd. And applications again are closing on September 30th. We will work directly with those consultants starting in late fall to really build this comprehensive overhaul of our EOP. comprehensive overhaul of our EOP. This will be directly in line with the Charleston County Chapter 7 Emergency Preparedness Ordinance that is going to go up for first reading for y'all in the beginning of September. I believe it's in the next, the first meeting in September. Can I answer any questions about the comprehensive overhaul for the EOP? Perfect, I'll pass it back over to Justin.
Thank you, Chase. Action item number two was to assess and build our financial reserves. Previously, you approved to establish a disaster reserve fund. I just want to take a moment to let this sink in and applaud all of you for taking aggressive action on this. There are states and local jurisdictions across this entire country trying to grapple with what to do. The fact that Charleston County immediately took action and voted to establish this fund really shows how progressive the county is and how financially responsible we want to be when it comes to disaster recovery costs. It was known nationwide, actually, the National Association of Emergency, International Association of Emergency Managers actually highlighted this approval on your end, so again, kudos to all of you for taking an aggressive approach and the initial first steps. I think now the question we have to address is, how much money do we need in our piggy bank for this really, really bad day that we know eventually will come? Well, what I can tell you right now is that in the past year, there have been 100, or excuse me, there's been 63 major presidential disaster declarations. That's an average of three, three, every, a major presidential disaster declaration every 3.5 days. I've been in this business now for 22 years. I've never seen the frequency in which these disasters are occurring and their costs as well. Of those 63 disasters, the average cost for each one of them for the impacted jurisdiction was $154 million. Working with Public Works and our debris management contractor, we just did a quick assessment of what it would cost us just to move debris from the county following a category 2, 3, 4, 5 hurricane. We're looking at costs, again, just for debris, anywhere between 50 million to 170 million based upon the impacts here in the county. Working with our current reimbursement process from FEMA and a couple of assumptions, we're, our target goal that's been proposed is $30 million to put into our disaster reserve fund to protect the county and to prepare the county for any catastrophic cost associated with recovery. Next, number three was to strengthen state and regional partnerships. There's a number of things that we're working on right now to codify that approach. First is establishing a Charleston County Emergency Preparedness Committee, which is pretty standard across the country. This committee would convene to address and discuss emergency prepared issues and to ensure that all municipalities and the county are in lockstep with our preparedness measures. Disasters know no borders, which is also why we are working within the tri-county area with Dorchester and Berkeley on establishing a similar committee structure to look at this from a regional perspective. This regional committee, we would also need regardless, as we start to pursue additional homeland security grants, such as the Urban Area Security Initiative, which requires a, which would require such working group, so that'll position us as we seek additional federal grant dollars. And next, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Brandy Griffith to talk about some hazard mitigation.
I'm Brandy Griffith. I am the Finance and Special Projects Manager for Emergency Management. With regards to hazard mitigation, we are currently exploring some backup energy solutions with Joint Base Charleston. Molly Cagliano in our resiliency office has been taking the lead on that project. We've completed the Brownsville Strategic Plan to mitigate multi-hazard vulnerabilities through their redevelopment. We've also completed a matrix to prioritize flood mitigation projects as well. We are also currently coordinating with the Charleston County School District, who we have a MOU with, to provide some grant funding for needed generators at our, three of our five identified public shelters during a storm or disaster.
Thank you, Brandy. Next up was to assess our insurance policies as they relate to damages following a disaster. Karen Green did a deep dive into this and briefed emergency management and the deputy county administrators and the CA's office on our insurance policy, and I'm happy to report back out that all of our buildings are covered at 100% replacement cost with a $10,000 deductible. This change was made, I believe, about a year ago that covers flood, wind, hail, earthquake, and any sort of weather event, including, including fire. So I think, from an insurance perspective, I think this puts the county and our facilities in a very good place should we incur damages as a result of a hurricane or any type of incident. So I don't think any additional actions need to be taken from an insurance perspective at this time. Next up, Patrick Donaldson is going to talk about revamping our Community Emergency Response Team training.
Thank you, Justin. Patrick Donaldson, as the Training and Exercise Coordinator, I can tell you that I'm really excited about this one. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I tend to get fired up about this stuff, but ladies and gentlemen, 34%, I want you to remember, 34% nationwide, on average, 34% of citizens believe that they are not prepared for disasters. 34% believe they are not prepared. We're trying to fix that with this initiative. I would say that of the presentation today, this particular slide is focused on what we do on the front end, okay? So we're focused on preparing our citizens so that we don't have to recover as much. We don't have to spend as much money in recovery. We don't have to rely on that disaster fund quite as much. So how are we doing this? We have to meet people at the street level, okay? Where the metal meets the meat. All right, we have to get out to them and prepare them, and by doing that, we're going to do a couple of things. First, we're going to help prevent the burden that we put on our first responders. And secondly, we're going to help build the overall resilience for Charleston County. So we're going to, we, we've, excuse me. Okay, our goal is to help our citizens become more prepared in the first 72 to 96 hours after a disaster. Y'all are probably familiar with our Community Emergency Response Team program, the SERP program. We're going to take that program and the curriculum of preparedness that's within that program and expand upon it. We're going to teach practical skills to citizens so that they can use these skills to prepare themselves and their families. For households, that means, that means things like insurance education, emergency planning, generator safety, safe chainsaw operation, how to properly board up windows, how to properly deploy sandbags. Another focus is going to be threat awareness, or what you might call disaster literacy. And that's, you know, how do they, do they understand the information that we're putting out there for them? All right, as emergency managers, we tend to put out a lot of information, good information, but on average, citizens only read up to a sixth or seventh grade level. So we have to be sure that what we're putting out there for our citizens is something that they can, they can actually use. So that's what we call disaster literacy. So to do that, we're going to take a look at flood maps. We're going to take a look at National Weather Service products and teach them how to interpret those, teach them how to use that information. A third category will be simple communications training, how to properly use radios, how to connect with the community emergency alert systems. And all these things, just so you know, are just examples. We have a long list of ideas. When we roll this out in early 2026, we want to remain flexible so that we can adapt to the needs of the community. Now, when it comes to implementation, we're not just talking about classroom lectures. That's what across the nation, most communities have done, including our own. We do that really well. But what we want to do is host things like seasonal workshops, you know, for example, a Storm Prep Saturday or a Flood Ready Friday, where we get out into the community and we partner with local hardware stores, with insurance, the Department of Insurance and other county departments, amateur radio groups, and so forth. So when we, when we partner with these other stakeholders, we can get out into the community and actually teach these skills to our citizens so that they can go back home and use them. Again, I'm excited about this program. I do believe it'll make a positive impact on the culture of preparedness in Charleston County. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Number eight, grant applications. Bring you back up.
In May, Charleston County launched its first grants working group. This created a collaborative forum for our departments to share information, align our priorities, and strengthen the county's ability to develop competitive grant applications. This group is met monthly, and we've gained momentum over the summer, particularly in identifying both current initiatives and future project needs across departments. In late July, the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA announced more than $2 billion in federal grant opportunities. Of the first 11 programs that were released, emergency management was eligible for two. Those included the Emergency Management Performance Grant, as well as the State Homeland Security Grant. Together, those anticipated awards total $139,000. Looking ahead, emergency management is working to position the county to qualify for the Urban Area Security Initiative. This is also referred to as UWASI. It's under the Homeland Security Grant Program. This would open the door to significantly larger regional funding opportunities. We're also actively preparing projects that would qualify for any available FY24 reverted grant funds, ensuring we remain ready to maximize every funding opportunity.
And last but not least, action item number nine was to deepen our private sector, non-governmental organizations, and faith-based relationships. So there's a mechanism in disaster recovery in which volunteer organizations come together to provide and augment government services to provide services for the community. That's called Volunteer Organizations Active in Disasters, or VOAD. The VOAD here in Charleston has been dormant now for several years. We want to bring it back to life. Ms. Molly Caliano has been championing this effort to reestablish our VOAD. We have conducted two workshops to date with over 40 attendees and 70 organizations represented. We have a lot of great momentum that she has championed. We have identified Trident United Way as the fiscal sponsor for the Charleston VOAD, which is absolutely fantastic. Right now, we are looking to help them secure funding to fund a VOAD coordinator position, which would work directly with counties during an emergency to connect VOAD organizations, so volunteer organizations that can provide service to the disaster, to our emergency response system, to get resources and equipment in support to disaster survivors here in the county faster than we can. The next VOAD workshop is scheduled for September 17th, and if all goes well, we hope to have the VOAD fully up and operational with the next six months. This is a huge, huge win, and kudos from Molly for championing this effort. With that, those are the nine action items and their status updates. I can now pause and take any questions that you have.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions coming from any council members? All right, thank you so much. And I do appreciate the collaboration, the intersectionality, particularly between other directorates and departments. I think that some of these issues are not singular or siloed. Many of them, you know, tangentially overlap, and so for the wisdom and insight to work collaboratively with others that have similar entry points, particularly in emergency and disaster opportunities, is very smart.
You're going to hear it all the time from me, but emergency management's a team sport, and you're part of that team, so I appreciate your support as well.
All right. I did a TED Talk one time talking about public safety. Some people think that it's only the job of the police, but public safety is everybody's responsibility, and certainly the same is true with emergency management. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to take out of order 5B. My TED Talk is, you know, still live. You can go watch it for yourself. It's at the bottom of my signature line when I send it, send it, send emails out, so you can see that as well. 5B, Ms. Johnson is here. Evergreen Cemetery Monument, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Just wanted to give you that opportunity in the event you wish to leave. Now, Ms. Johnson is a former councilwoman and a councilwoman emeritus, so certainly.
Thank you, everyone, council members. It's always great to see you all, and I'm not used to this because I, I've been sitting on the other side of this for such a long time, but I'm here to just ask for your support in us being able to put a monument at the Evergreen Cemetery located behind the Baxter Patrick Library on James Island. Charleston County did a great job in putting a brand-new library on Grimble Road, which butts the cemetery. And we were able to have a survey done of the cemetery, protection for the cemetery, and beautification, even storytelling, but we didn't get finished. And I want to be able to finish that mission by having the monument installed at the cemetery on the Baxter Patrick property. So I would thank you very much if you all would give great consideration, and we want to make this something that the community would be able to come and learn more about the Evergreen Cemetery behind the Baxter Patrick Library. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, we're going to go back to our consent agenda. Item 3A, S H L.
A through G.
Probably moved and seconded. Let it be known by saying aye. Ayes, posers nay. The ayes have it. We're going to move to finance directorate items. 4A, financial incentives.
Prove A through C.
Beggars. And seconded, discussion. Mr. Vice Chair Karowski.
Yeah, I'd ask for roll call votes on each and a discussion on each separately.
All right, so we're just on 4A.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so that is the one that we're talking about right now. And you're teed up for discussion.
Okay. I'd like to ask the staff on this one, am I correct, that we don't know the name of the company who's, it is, and it says it's a foreign country, you know? We know the name of the foreign country before we vote on this.
We're not on that, that one, Mr. Karowski.
So respectfully, the answer would be no, then?
For, for, I'm sorry, what was your question again, Mr. Karowski?
My question.
You're on a different item.
Okay.
We're on item A for Project Modern.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it wasn't 4A.
Karowski, may you pause for one minute just so I can make sure that we handled that motion properly? I was stuck on 4A. Did someone, you know, recommend that we do 4A through something else?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was in 4B. I was following the order.
Mr. Chair, I seconded. And he seconded it, so, so we're dealing with all of them under the directorate as one.
If he wants to vote on them separate, I don't have a problem with that.
That was my request.
All right, very well. So you're talking about which one now?
4A, I apologize. I was following the order of my documents, but 4A, it says that we would create 53 new jobs. My question is, do we know whether those are 53 jobs that the people are coming from outside here, or they'd be 53 jobs that we have done from Charleston County residents?
I, I know that those are going to be 53 new jobs that will be attached to that new facility. Whether or not they're coming from outside, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Karowski.
Thank you, sir. And also, I wanted to ask just to make clear, because it is a, a public hearing, what are the actual incentives that we're giving, and how much revenue do we lose by giving those incentives by the length of the incentives that we're giving? And this asking in layman's terms, it's a public hearing, so anybody listening.
Meeting.
Public meeting, I'm sorry, would understand it.
Yeah, so Mr. Karowski, yes, sir. So to that, to that question, so this is a fee-in lieu, 20 years of fee-in lieu with a special source of revenue credit, and the details are in the yellow sheet, and the, and the. And the details are in the yellow sheet, and in this instance, we anticipate roughly, sorry, I'm just making sure I've got the numbers accurately, approximately $11.6 million in new revenue coming to the taxing entities over a 20-year period. There is a special source revenue credit that's being offered to the tune of not to exceed $2 million, and that equates to roughly 17% of the fee in lieu payments. And then, we are also asking for, South Carolina Department of Commerce is offering a grant. We are offering, we're asking that you guys approve us to accept the grant. They're also asking for Charleston County Economic Development Grant to the tune of $175,000 to help defray some infrastructure cost.
So the incentive is the $175,000 aid in covering the cost?
That is, that is one of them, yes, sir.
What are the other ones, again? Just the...
There's a state grant that's being offered, and we're asking you guys to approve, to accept that grant, and then the other one is the fee in lieu and SSRC agreement.
Well, the fee in lieu of what? Just so anybody listening would understand that. I understand we're voting on it, again, it's a public meeting. I didn't mean to imply a public hearing, but, so anybody listening to that could understand what we're doing, what money we're gaining by what you're saying, and what county money from taxpayers that we're giving out.
Yes, sir. So to get back to that again, so just to cover it from the top to the bottom, we're anticipating this company making approximately $46 million in new investment into the county, and then in the fee in lieu agreement, we are offering them, it will be a revenue coming to the taxing entities of close to $12 million over the 20-year period, and then again, a special source revenue credit of not to exceed $2 million will be going back to them to help defray some of their costs.
The incentive is the grant from the state?
Yes, sir.
And the $2 million tax credit? Is that the extent of the incentives?
And then the $175,000 grant that we're asking for, for infrastructure improvement.
Thank you, sir. That's the extent of the incentives.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Werman?
You were just correcting me earlier. I'm gonna clear up some of that, but I think it got cleared up.
All right, Mr. Boykin. Chair, Mr. Johnson. The state of this property right now, has it developed at all?
It is. This is an existing company, and they will be building an additional 60,000 square-foot building.
It's a substantial investment, so it's fair to say that the tax value of this property is going greatly increased when they make these improvements?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Darby?
And I guess my question would be, if it's already an existing company, why? Why not a home? I'm just asking.
It's an existing building, it's nothing...
Oh, building, not company.
No, no, it is, it is both. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it is an existing building, but they're building a brand-new building, and it is an existing company. The reason for the confidentiality, Mr. Darby, is there are some state incentives that have to get passed as well, and we cannot get out in front of that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yes, Ms. Honeycutt?
Mr. Johnson, I just want to make clear, if we did not approve this, is it unlikely that they would actually move forward with this investment?
That is 100% correct. We're competing with, I think about roughly another six of their existing facilities.
And so they're gonna bring in $12 million of new revenue to these tax sources that would not otherwise come in if we didn't approve this?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moody?
She asked my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we can go for the roll call vote on A, B, C, and D. A, B, and C, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that, so we're voting on both, so I wanted to...
No, we voted on one, you won on separate, so we're voting on A right now.
Okay, I just, thank you. Then we'll discuss B, thank you.
No, so if you want to discuss B, please discuss B now, because this is open discussion for A, B, and C.
Okay, then I'll ask the staff on Project B, as I understand, it says Project O P F is a farm-based company. My correct is that we will vote on this with, because I can't vote on something I don't know the name of, of what the company's name is and what foreign company, what foreign country this is from. Do we know that, or can we say that, sir?
I cannot answer that question, Mr. Karowski.
Yes.
And it says creating 55 full-time jobs. Do we know whether those 55 full-time jobs are jobs that they will come from out of state, or will they be 55 new jobs from people that live in Charleston County?
I can't answer that as well, Mr. Karowski.
And my third question, then, would be, the same layman terms, what incentives we're giving them to do this? You did a good job of answering that before, sir, and I just, it's the same question for this.
And so then, in this one, it is, I'll start at the top again, they will be making an investment of approximately $5.8 million, and the breakout is roughly $4.6 million of M and E, and $1.2 million in real property. And then we're offering a fee in lieu of taxes, 20 years, and that anticipated revenue, we predict to be around, where is it at? Just under $1 million to the taxing entities, and then we're asking for a special source revenue credit of up to $75,000, which is roughly 16% of the taxes.
And how much tax revenue would we be projected to lose over the 20 years?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Karowski. Again, I think that the goal is to get the million-dollar tax incentive.
Well, how much revenue we lose, and are we reducing their tax rate, or is it just...
It's the standard fee in lieu, Mr. Karowski, where the millage rate will be locked, as well as the 6% assessment ratio.
What will be locked? $2.97. I read it. I think that's what it was.
Give me one second, it's in here, 314.9 mils.
Okay, 314. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr.?
Mr. Middleton, Chairman Middleton, thank you. So if we were to not do this incentive, $1 million in taxing revenues would go away, 55 jobs paying $76,000 would not happen, and they would go to St. Louis or somewhere else, is that correct?
That is correct. If I can also add to that, Mr. Moody, it's also a major tier-one supplier to Boeing, and so that would, that would also not...
So when the question is asked, how much are we giving up? That's, that's, it's not a question, because nothing is happening right now.
Yes, sir.
So you're not giving up anything. You're not doing anything if you do nothing.
Yes, sir.
All right, one more question?
Vice Chair, maybe I can explain it to you again. When you ask for these people to be identified, it will be identified at third reading. So you have up to three readings if you want to disagree and don't vote for it, but under the confidentiality clause, you know, and under the Commerce Act, we can't identify these folks for financial reasons until third reading. So you won't know the name on this before you have a final vote. And so what we are doing now is just passing it along, but during third reading, if we want to say no, it can be done at third reading, but the name will be supplied as well. So that's on every fee in lieu of tax, and it's, you know, and incentives with Charleston County. So maybe you'll understand that's why he can't give these names until third reading.
All right, Mr. Karowski?
Respectfully, I understand that, and thank you for the explanation, but I, for one, can't vote on something when I don't know the name of the company, or what country it is, or where the jobs are coming from. And I understand the counterarguments, and I just argue again that the thing is, for 55 new jobs, we're giving tax incentives, and for all the tens of thousands of people, or thousands who have their own businesses, the same thing would apply, that if we gave tax reductions to the people who lived and worked here, they would spend their money and create new revenue sources. So that's my reason to be consistent in voting against these, and thank you.
Thank you, Chair. All right, Mr. Boykin, please call for the question. So the roll call vote?
Yes, sir.
4A.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Karowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
That's Project Modern.
Yeah, I'll wait until the third reading.
So you're not voting? Or you're voting nay? Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I do think that Mr. Karowski has some good points in asking those questions, and I would have the same questions as well. Now, is it just customary policy in terms of the third reading, and why we can do this at the second reading? Is that law, or what, sir, in terms of the three, waiting until the third reading to identify these companies? Because, again, I would have some questions as well, and not that I am anti-foreign country, because we all are interdependent.
No one can tell us, we just can't say it.
Where does that stand in terms of the law?
That's, that's a wonderful question, Mr. Darby. I don't know the answer to that, because I don't, I don't know the law from the standpoint of the public hearing versus second and third reading as far as numbers, the dates.
That won't be a question for you, sir. That's a question for council.
Yes, sir.
Because we are the one who is saying it, and not you.
Sir.
Saying waiting to the third reading, so where is that coming from?
Mr. Darby, you know, in my long tenure here, the reason this was jumped in is, is a lot of these companies don't want to be identified in case something goes wrong.
Mr. Pryor, I understand that, sir, but I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But my question is, why not the second as opposed to the third? Because, again, I understand the rationale for his questions.
Because that's the policy that's set.
What policy? Is it policy where?
It comes from Commerce, and then it comes from the state.
That's what I'm asking, is it state law? That's what I'm asking.
And it's not, I see, we have to abide by what the state allows us to do, sir.
Mr. Werman?
Never mind, I think it got there again, late, late one more time, I apologize.
4B, roll call vote.
So, you understand that now, Mr. Karowski, it's a state law, so if you've got problems with that, you might want to talk to your legislature, a senator, to get it changed.
4B, roll call vote.
Okay, doesn't change my opinion, but thank you.
4B, roll call vote, thank you so much.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Karowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Nay.
Motion passes with seven ayes and two nays?
4C, roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
This is a request to revise Chapter 3 livability of the Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Karowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with nine ayes.
All right, item five, council members, item 5A, trust for public land, TST assistance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move to authorize you to engage by sending a letter to the Land for Public Trust, the Trust for Public Land, rather, to work with our staff and consultants on the future of our TST program, and specifically, their expertise is within the Green Belt and Green Space area, and so including our Green Space staff as well, just to make sure we have all opinions at the table as we move forward in this process.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those, yes, Mr. Pryor.
I ask that this comes back before council, before it's mailed out, even though you've got the authority to have a draft?
Sure.
It should be sent to all council members, you know, for any edits or additions.
We have always done that since January, but we will continue.
Yeah, because I don't want nobody to blame you.
That's right.
For something that's going out. So that's why I think everybody to have a chance to see it before it goes out.
Tell me to do it, but we've enshrined that, enshrined that as a standard practice.
And I will say to Mr. Pryor's point, there is a draft letter, I believe the attorney is working on it as well, just to make sure, so.
And I, and we've shared that with you all already, as well, previous.
But the final, what, final vote is what?
Absolutely. I've just learned that we share everything. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. Item 5C, Mr. Karowski. Charleston Animal Society invoices.
Thank you. I just want to bring it up that we still, for the Charleston Animal Society, for the month of March and April of 2025, that there was a lot of work done with live stray animals, and services were provided, and I believe we owe for doing that, and this has been batted around. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and pay what for the services that were provided for live stray animals by the Charleston Animal Society for those two months.
I'm sorry, is that a motion?
Yes. Probably moved?
We're down for lack of second, but I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
So, the last time these folks came before us, we asked them to bring us a bill, that a current bill that took care of all the backlog. And so we paid that. So now we come back and says they left out, was this May, let me see, April and May? March and April?
March and April.
But we asked them to bring us a current bill, we paid up everything they asked for, and then we signed a new contract. So why now? Why they didn't include this if it is? So, I mean, it's like buying a used car, you know, and I sell it to you for a certain price, and then you come back, and then I come back to you and says, oh, well, Mr. Milton, Reverend Milton, you owe me an extra couple thousand dollars because I forgot to charge you. I mean, a contract is a contract. And so we honored our contract, and we still on our contract moving forward, and I was the one advocating to pay them for the back pay that they didn't get paid. I said, let's do this because I thought it was the right thing to do. And Mr. Moody said, well, they're gonna keep coming back. I said, Mr. Moody?
Hate when I'm right.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the word is.
It doesn't happen often.
Yeah. And I said, well, Mr. Moody, this is it, because this is the final bill, the center, the chairman signed off on it when he got his staff did, so I don't know where this is coming from.
So, Mr. Pryor, just in, you know, again, when we were negotiating the contract, or going back and forth with various iterations of the contract with the legal staff at the Charleston Animal Society, there were the December, January, and February bills that were invoices that were sent to us, that was already on the table. I think I've been, I kept you all abreast of that during the time. We were still moving toward a contract, and then, you know, just to kind of keep one thing separate, and then go back to do the other thing, meaning the December, January, and February bills, we then focused on moving the contract across the finish line, which we did, and then we came back and dealt with those bills that were presented. Along somewhere in that time period, these were also sent. So these are not brand-spanking new, it's not like we did not know that the March and April bills existed. These were sent somewhere around May, and so, because I was committed to the bills that were on the table at the time that Mr. Darby sent me with a challenge or a commission to bring some of these things to a conclusion, I then concluded the things that were on the list that were before me, meaning the contract, and any outstanding encumbrances that were in question. And so we went back and forth on that. We finally landed with paying them December, January, and February, and so the vice chair took the charge on these, and so that's why these are back before us tonight.
Let me ask a question, when did we pay them, these things? Can we get a chronological timeline on, when did we send them a check for those back bills? And when did we sign the contract?
All of those were around the same time.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, maybe by Tuesday, because my thing is, I like, if we paid these people and we signed a contract back then, then the billing period started as soon as we signed the contract. So I would like to know, when did we pay the invoices, and when did we sign the contract? And I know Mr. Gal is not here, and Sharon can't get that information, but, you know...
The contract was one May.
One May.
Started.
Started in May.
Isn't that right, Ms. Ham?
Okay, so that's it.
And I can tell you when the...
So if it was before May, this should have been included in the back bills.
And we made the payment on June 11th.
All right, so June, okay. So these bills should have been presented with the other back bills, so to say we only So to say we only took care of November, December, and January, I mean, so what I'm saying is, if I know you owe me money and I asked you to bring me a final bill, or you asked me for a final bill, I'm going to give you the final bill up until the new contract. So that's why it's so confusing.
I'm looking through this document, it's the first time I've seen it. And I just thought that none of this was covered under the contract. Okay, so these predate the agreement that we now have?
Yes.
Ms. Hahn?
It appears, and I obviously cannot speak for the administrator or his staff, but it appears that I received the first copy of these bills on June 12th.
And when was the contract entered?
May 1st. June 1st, happy June.
Nonetheless, these came to us for the first time, or came to you for the first time after the contract was entered?
Yes, it appears it was after we paid the outstanding invoices.
I got some questions with, well, why are we paying bills for Hannah Hand, Walterboro, and some of these things in Somerville? I mean, if you go down, you look at some of these things, they say unincorporated Charleston County. Did we check to see if it was in the unincorporated area? Hannah Hand is in Berkeley County. No part of Hannah Hand is in Charleston County. So why are we paying for these animals listed for Hannah Hand? Somerville, a little part of Somerville is by, the Hagan Field is in the unincorporated area. But these other things, wouldn't that be Dorchester County? So, you know, I got a lot of questions when I look at these things here, you know, and they just send a bill, and I guess we're not going to look at it. And then they put unincorporated area over there. So I, even, I would like to say I have to check, just even if we're not going to pay it, because I don't want to be paying for something in Hannah Hand or Walterboro and Somerville. I really don't. Even some of these things in North Charleston.
Mr. Boykin?
I'm sorry, point of order. I'm very apologetic. I just, I could not remember if Mr. Pryor asked a question or if he seconded the motion.
No, I asked a question.
The motion died for lack of second.
So I just want to make it clear to the chairman that there is a motion on the table. There has not been a second. We have entered into discussion inappropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Attorney. And I do appreciate your interjection at this strategic time, because I try to be very respectful to all council persons. Mr. Pryor immediately, you know, kind of went in, so I didn't want to interrupt.
Well, it wasn't a discussion, it was a question for me. I mean, it was a question that, you know, didn't they get paid? That wasn't a discussion.
Yes, sir. No more discussion. The attorney has just ceased our ability to talk about this at this point with her statements, so we're going to just let that go. All right, 5D. We have a hate intimidation ordinance in front of us. This is in your packet. Mr. Pryor, Mr. Darby? Any conversation on this to tee this up? All right, so the ordinance itself is in your packet, and it's, Mr. Darby says, plain as can be, is there a motion? All right, properly moved, seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers, nay.
Nay.
Have the nays raised their hand?
Do we have a discussion?
Not now.
Again on Tuesday, it's going to come back.
Boykin, Honeycutt, and SASS are nay? Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. And 5E, fee in lieu of tax termination procedures? Mr. Werman?
I'll just first move to direct staff to prepare a report to council regarding the avenues and consequences for terminating a FLO agreement.
All right, we're properly moved. Is there a second for the sake of discussion?
Well, I mean, I can discuss. If I can't get a second, I guess we can just discuss first. All right.
Let me, okay, a second?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Darby.
So, listen, you know, we've certainly heard a lot over the last year about Elbit and, you know, the facility they've got in Ladson where, you know, I understand they're making some sort of weapon systems for Israel and for other folks, too. You know, at the same time, we've continued to see news out of Gaza regarding, you know, atrocities and humanitarian crises and really sort of unfathomable, you know, horror there. And I, for one, am certainly horrified by that. I know a lot of other folks in this community are as well, and not just the folks who've been, you know, certainly dutifully coming to talk about it, but, you know, neighbors, friends, folks out in the community. And so ultimately, you know, the thing that I have been convinced of over the last couple of months is that we do need to face the fact that by virtue of this FLO agreement, I think we are a part of this in some way. And, you know, on some level, we are subsidizing the production of weapons to Israel, not necessarily weapons used in Gaza. I mean, I guess we don't really know that. But nevertheless, they're going to the Israeli Defense Forces, at least based on all the research I've seen. And so, you know, listen, we've talked about this a little bit, and without a doubt, if I knew then what I know now, I understand when the votes were taken, that none of the crises that we're currently seeing had really started. My vote would certainly be different, and I can take that into account, you know, moving forward. But, listen, I do want to know if there's anything we can do now to stop these subsidies. And, you know, particularly, I guess, you know, we have sort of normal mechanisms for these types of agreements. I don't think that's where we would have an avenue. Maybe we do. I, you know, that's why I kind of wanted it to be a broader motion. But, you know, particularly, you see these international bodies and organizations saying that there's all these violations of international law and humanitarian law. I'm not going to get into the details of that, but I guess my sort of core question here is what, if any, is Elbit's connection to any of that? And if there is a connection, is there any grounds in the FLO agreement for terminating based on that? And, you know, I think there's a lot of other issues that come up with that, for sure. I mean, we would need to look at what that means for the other FLO agreements we have. I mean, are there other agreements with folks who are sort of in a similar position? How does that affect things? But, you know, ultimately, I will just say that if there is a plausible argument to terminate this FLO agreement, I would probably be in support of that. But first, we need to answer some of these questions, and that's, you know, that's basically my motion. Chairman, I will say, you know, I do want to say unfortunately, these are obviously heavy issues and unfortunately, ones that, you know, get construed with antisemitism and, you know, sort of, you know, erasure of the context. I think that it is entirely possible to recognize, you know, the horror of October 7th as well as recognize that, you know, that this is still an enormous issue that we should address. And the fact is, we aren't subsidizing weapons for Hamas. We're subsidizing weapons for Israel. And I just feel we should explore any avenue we have to stop that. So, that's the explanation in the motion.
What is the motion?
Well, again, it was to direct staff to prepare a report to council regarding avenues for terminating FLO agreements. I think I might have also said and consequences, because I think we need to kind of understand what that would look like procedurally and...
Like a breach of the contract we entered as a FLO agreement?
Well, yeah. I mean, you know, if you, I mean, we're getting sort of into the legal weeds, but if you assert that there's been a breach and you're wrong, what does that mean? You know, so... I'm not directing this discussion.
Gabrowski?
I'd like to respond in the strongest possible terms. I find it extremely offensive, just about everything you had to say. I've been strongly opposed to giving the incentives. I voted against them tonight, and I voted consistently against them, but I could not support this because of the reasons you said. And I remind you, as a child, a World War II veteran, that when we faced evil in the Second World War, we didn't strike a deal with Hitler and save Berlin. Our forces devastated Berlin till the war was prosecuted to the end. We didn't stop with Japan. We stopped until the war was successfully done. And you're, you know, to say that any government doesn't have the right to do everything within its power to rescue hostages as we're speaking, people are, they came on October 7th and raped beheaded babies, killed men, raped women, brought babies and raped women underground to this day, starving them under the ground in a terrorist hideout below religious institutions, schools. How, what are they supposed to do? They're supposed to leave them there? And in your sense of what you're saying about weapons would apply to us defending ourselves. Weapons are meant to kill. Weapons are meant for war. Would you deprive our armed forces of weapons that do the same things? What would you have the Israeli people do? What would you do if your family, your loved ones were kept underground, starved, raped, and beaten? What would you do? What would they do? And again, this goes with the, I just find it, you know, outrageous that, again, with the hate intimidation ordinance, I voted to do it the next week. Would you feel with equanimity if every meeting you had to be escorted by police escorts down by people who advocate for what you're advocating, doing things before they kill Jews, the same slogans in Colorado and Washington, D.C.? And to appease a lobby, and I do see it as antisemitic, to deprive the right of the Jewish homebody to defend themselves and rescue their hostages, and if the terrorists that shoot at them are hiding under places, you do whatever you have to to rescue your people and deprive them of the weapons to do it. The same argument would have been used to stop us from completing what we had to do to defeat evil in World War II. We face no less now. If your suggestion, we would have left Hitler in power in Berlin and the, you know, the emperor in Japan, it's no different. You complete a job, and they have weapons to do it. So thank you, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Boykin? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think another way to look at this is, the jurisdiction over this is the U.S. Department of State and the U.S. Commerce Department under the Arms Export Control Act. And if these weapons were being sent in violation of U.S. law or international law, the federal government has every ability to restrict their exportation. And so, that's another way of looking at it. So if the United States government deemed it to be unlawful or improper, they could stop it. I don't know if it's an issue for a county council to weigh in on. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Chairman. Middleton, Mr. Gabrowski, well said.
Thank you.
That October 7th date sure seems to get overlooked a lot. I know Mr. Werman did mention it, but, you know, as it affects Charleston County, we've got a 30-year track record. Former chairman Summy and Mayor Summy, when the naval base left, started our Economic Development Group. I may be rounding some dates, because we had 22,000 jobs leave out of here. And our county and area has been amazingly adept at winning. If I'm Project Modern, I'm Project OPF, and I hear this discussion, I got to start thinking, is this the right place for me to go? Is this business friendly? For business, as far as I'm concerned. We've got some 400 defense contractors in Charleston County. We're a defense community. This is one of them. Owned by an Israeli company. That's problematic. We're focusing on that. Very problematic. So, I don't know from a financial standpoint, you know, you start reneging on deals, I mean, what does that do to our bond rating? Mr. Pryor, did you work so hard back in your day with Chairman to get? You start backing out and start changing the rules on FLOs? What's that going to do to your reputation? This is very dangerous to be discussing in public. Very trouble. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Werman?
That I stand by what I said. I don't think that what I'm doing should be something that, you know, is so completely untouchable to even discuss. Literally, the motion on the floor is to find out information, in fact. So, you know, the fact that I'm not even allowed to ask these questions, I think is absurd. I think the comments that were directed to me are also absurd, and I stand by what I said. I try to be sensitive to the fact that there is context for all this. There are real risks of these types of conversations, you know, running into antisemitism. I mean, we did, in fact, just pass an anti-discrimination, well, we have some more readings to do, but hopefully we'll pass an anti-discrimination ordinance. Listen, I don't take that lightly, but I think, you know, if you see what is happening there, it is shocking to me that I'm, you know, being derided for having an opinion on it, quite frankly. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, roll calls.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Darby.
I don't know the exact word I wanted to use. I can't even think about it. Everybody has his or her right to opinion.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
It's his or her right to opinion. And, Mr. Gabrowski, just as I have defended you for whatever you want to say, I can't defend Mr. Werman for anything that he wants to say. I would be hypocritical in that measure. However, I would, and it appears that Mr. Werman has a type of moral conviction at this time to ask those questions. Had I known earlier, or had he spoken in the way he feels, Mr. Werman, I would have asked that you would procure a copy of the contract first. And if there were something in the contract that you did not like, because as you mentioned, we had this contract two years, almost two years before the crisis began. We never knew that this was happening. We did not know. And for the lawyers to come here and to condemn us for something we did not know, and particularly if the contract has been signed, that's now law. So I would just suggest, sir, that you amend, to at least read the contract first to see what the contract has to say. You've read it already?
I've read it.
Is it something that you and I can discuss, sir? Could we do that, sir? Because I don't want to appear, and anyone who's on this podium here to defend Mr. Werman, I don't think his remarks ought to say that he is antisemitic. I would not say that at all, because that is his opinion, and I would stand by him for that. Because again, Mr. Gabrowski, just as I support you in all things, sir, I would have to do the same thing him in terms of his moral conviction. But I would ask, I wish you had some type of discussion, because I don't know what the contract says, sir.
Ms. Honeycutt?
Is this not possible to ask staff without a motion? I think this is the kind of thing we can direct staff to do. Can we just do that and see what the answer is and then weigh in?
I mean, you know, I think ultimately, we do this all the time of directing staff through a motion. You know, motions on the floor, I'd like to vote on it.
I'm going to move for a deferral then, until we can get an answer on the question. There's an executive session associated with this, and I can't vote on it without knowing what the legal...
There's not an executive session associated with this. It said executive session if needed, if we needed to go receive legal advice on this matter. And so, that's why it was placed there.
Right. And what I'm saying is, I would need that in order to vote on this. And I know it's just a request for staff, which is why I think you can just request staff instead of making this a motion out of it. So my request, my motion, I think that supersedes the motion on the floor, is to defer until we get that answer.
Is there a second to the motion to defer?
Hold on. And the parliamentary procedure, now, hold on, hold on. A motion to table rules everything, not a motion to defer. He already has a motion on the floor.
So there are some sort of ranking, there are ranking motions, and I, not to cut you off, but there are order of motions, and the table is one of them, and to defer, but let's get the order of them.
If there's a motion on the floor already, you can't defer. You can table, but you can't defer.
Honeycutt, what it means, sir, in terms, terminology is correct, but if you were to use the term table...
Table and defer is two different motions.
Ms. Honeycutt, would you mind changing your language, ma'am, from defer to table?
My understanding is if I put it on the table, I have to pick it up back off the table.
Yeah, so, a motion to table is only for time within this meeting. So if you put something on the table, you could pick it back up during this meeting.
Right.
If the motion is to adjourn or to postpone the debate, that would be a motion to move something to another meeting, to stop discussion on it today and move it to some future...
Not defer, because once a motion is on the floor, you can't defer.
Then I would move to adjourn this particular discussion on this motion.
Executive session first?
So, the motion to adjourn would be to adjourn the meeting, the whole meeting, not the discussion.
Not the whole meeting.
A motion to adjourn would be to adjourn this item, right?
No.
The whole meeting. Meeting. It would be to adjourn, well, I'm not gonna support that. Madam Attorney.
It's a motion to end debate.
Motion to end debate may have been the correct terminology. She said adjourned, it's fine.
Is not debatable.
A motion to table is not debatable.
That means no discussion. Table it for two weeks.
She can postpone it for two weeks. If she tables...
Or she could table it during this meeting if we need to go in executive session.
And come back.
And then come back.
To this same meeting.
Right. And so, I don't have a second on any of it yet. The motion to table, at least for the discussion of the executive session, and then come back.
Right.
All right, it dies for the lack of a second.
I'd call the question, Chairman.
Which question?
One that Mr. Warman made him second.
Excuse me, no, 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 sir. I withdraw my second.
Okay.
That's interesting.
To Mr. Warman's motion.
Okay.
Because I mean, if this is gonna be discussed, I don't think, it needs to be behind closed doors.
Okay, but then there, the chairman needs to provide an opportunity for there to be a second, replacing Mr. Darby's second to Mr. Warman's original motion.
So, does anyone second the motion?
Why would we second?
Do what?
He don't have to do that. He was on his second. He don't have to give nobody a chance.
I withdraw my second.
My motion earlier. Well, my point of order then, because I didn't get any, um, opportunity to do that on 5C for the Charleston animals, so why are we making an exception for this one and not the other ones? Nobody said that before, would I even get a second motion?
No, this was a, this is, the situation is a bit different. In your motion, no one provided a second initially. In this motion, there was a second provided whereby other members of council could have also provided a second, and they chose not to because Mr. Darby, in fact, did so. So, since he has now withdrawn his second, there is an opportunity for someone else to now second the original motion.
Chairman, which the chairman just did.
It keeps going on.
Nobody did.
I wanna vote. Vote's been called.
Roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
You seconded it, sir? Did someone second it?
Mr. Middleton seconded it.
I think we need to get legal advice, Mr. Chairman.
We just did. We just did.
I think Mr. Warman would agree with that, and let's get some legal advice.
I think the question is very simple, you know, it's who is willing to find out to even explore the idea of terminating this? I mean, that's what the question is. Who's willing to even explore it? And I think it's worth finding out who's willing.
For the question, since she seconded it...
This is a very precarious position, Mr. Chairman.
Say it again.
You're putting us in a very precarious position, sir. Just do this publicly, sir.
Second, right?
Yeah.
This is very precarious, sir.
Oh, Middleton seconded it?
That's what Darby's made.
I don't think so. I think, Mr. Chairman, it's unfair that a company as well, too, they should be in, on this behind closed doors to discuss this as well, too. I mean, this thing has been done before some of y'all came on council, I think this thing was done right as soon as y'all come on here. And, you know, Mr. Dykes made a deal with this as far as the state commerce department dropped this in our lap, and we just took the fee in lieu. And to have a discussion, and then to take a vote without involving the other side, it's not a process of fairness. You know, but I mean, if we had to vote on this tonight, I would be honest, I would have to vote nay, because it doesn't give the other side a chance. So, I'm asking you guys, if you really wanna get an answer, you know, with this thing just saying, I just saying, well, I wanna take a vote and that's it, that's your call. But if you really wanna move this forward, I think you oughta, you know, maybe withdraw this thing and get some more information, and then come back and have Albert involved, because I'm telling you, this is gonna be a lot of repercussion, because, you know, we talking about this now. I'm looking for their lawyer to probably pick up the phone and call you, you sometime tomorrow to say what is going on. I mean, somebody should have sat down and talked to them first before we even did this. That's a courtesy.
I'd call for point of order that we have a proper motion that's been seconded, and we need to vote or not.
Let me say this, please, sir. I can't speak for everybody. I'm not educated on this. I don't know what the contract says. I don't know. And for me to vote on something I don't know was such a serious problem, sir. I don't think that's fair. And I'm asking you graciously, sir, to please, sir, remove your second, so we can have time for this to discuss, because I don't know anything about this. Nothing. And no offense, Mr. Warman, I wish, we all talk at some point in time, I wish we had known, then I'd be in a position to vote yes or no, because it killing me to stop on both sides. So, I don't have the knowledge on it, sir. I don't know what the contract says.
I think we're overstepping.
I'd like to read it for myself.
No, I've been very clear about this. I don't think that you should have to read the contract to vote on this. I mean, at least Mr. Moody and I can agree on that. I mean, this is a question of whether it's worth reading the contract in the first place to find out. And, you know, we have a disagreement on that. I can, you know, respectfully disagree on that, but I think it's a question worth asking.
Your question?
I think the attorney and the clerk have given us directions, been properly moved and seconded. I think this council's got a chance to send a very strong and clear message, Charleston County is a pro-business environment. That doesn't stop Mr. Warman from calling Mrs. Hammond, having a discussion with her if he'd like to. If this vote goes the way I hope it goes, he can do all he wants to do. That's his attorney as well. So, I, it's been motioned, it's been discussed to death, let's vote on it.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
I ain't going over there.
Yes, sir. Okay. Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kowalski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion fails with two ayes, six nays, and one abstention.
All right, I'm in six.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. There is a need for an executive session for two items, one of which is, both of which are contractual matters, one of which is involving 993 and 995 Morrison Drive, and the other is involving animal services.
Move to go to executive session for attorney's request.
Seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Close is nay. We are in executive session, you said 30 minutes?
Thirty minutes. And dealing with these, you know, what the repercussion is, I just sit and vote.
We're back from executive session. Well, not quite.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. They're stayed.
One, two.
Three.
All right. We're back from executive session. No votes were taken and we're ready to return back to council, resume our council meeting. So item 6A, 993, 995 Morrison Drive. 993, 995 Morrison Drive, who has?
I don't know that I had a motion. I would move, I think we're just moving to approve the contract. I would certainly move for that.
Per the discussion.
Per the discussion in executive session.
Probably moved and seconded. Who seconded that?
I do.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposeurs nay. Thank you so much. 6B Animal Services.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. I would move to approve the contract amendment and proceed with changes to animal services contracts as discussed in the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known.
Discussion.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Chairman Middleton. Mr. Tooten, I would like to know what Berkeley County is paying, if anything, for trap neuter and release. In one, there was an article in the Post and Courier from wrapping up the Berkeley County and Charleston Animal Society's partnership. The CEO of Charleston Animal Society made a comment that, quote, "The stress of operating shelters is too much on the government these days, and we're in a better position as a nonprofit to raise the money needed for spay and neuter programs, which is the only way we keep this from getting out of control." My read on that is that Berkeley County is not paying for TNR. I may be wrong. If I find out they are paying, then I would, I would support this motion. If they're paying zero, boy, would we look stupid. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Honeycutt.
It's my understanding from Berkeley County Administrator that they pay an annual amount for all services provided and that the facility is a zero cost lease. So it's a different structured agreement. They don't pay per animal like we've structured our contract.
Thank you.
Ms. Honeycutt, I still would like to see that maybe kind of line, I know it's apples and oranges, Mr. Tooten, but maybe we can line those things up. I'd like to see that.
Mr. Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
These numbers keeps going up and up and up. And, you know, our staff just presented a couple of weeks back that, you know, if things keeps going the way it is, we probably gonna have to raise mills to find some money, but yet we keep voting on and giving more money. Now, if you ride up and down the Astiford State Road, Riverside and all these other places, you see all these homeless folks, veterans sleeping, you know, on the street. And yet we gonna pay X amount of dollars, you know, more toward these. Nobody loves animals more than all of us in here. But it's got to come a point in time where we got to change our focus because I don't want to see these people slaying, you know, laying on the street and we could be taking some of this money using it to help homeless shelters or homeless camps. But, I mean, these people keep coming back and until we start saying no, they gonna keep coming back. It's like anything else. You know, the more you say yeah, the more they come back. Okay? And this is a business for them and it's a business for us too, but I mean, you ain't only got about a certain part of money. And you can't keep just giving and giving and giving because you gonna soon run out of money if you don't have a way to replenish it. So if we keep up this and next year's budget, when Mr. Tooten come and says, hey, we got to raise the milk by two, three or whatever it is, don't get mad at him. He just bringing the medicine whether you want to take it or not. So we might, we want to be cautious on how we spending these funds.
Mr. Pryor.
Mr. Pryor, I would, it's a simple math problem. If you take the number of how many unfixed feral cats that are out there and when cat breeding season cranks up and how many kittens they produce and then the public being kind-hearted people that they are, they're gonna pick up those kittens and they wind up at the shelter. Our cost for every one of those animals coming into the shelter is, is gonna be extremely, I mean, exponentially higher than the payment for those individual spays and neuters and being released back. It's almost like birth control, for lack of a better expression. And we will come out far better as a county government and a community with the reduction of those unwanted or, you know, feral kittens being born that are gonna wind up in the shelters. We're gonna pay much more for their care than preventing them from happening in the first place.
Vice Chair.
Once again, I find myself in agreement with what Mr. Boykin just said. I think it describes the situation as somebody who's often had multiple, multiple cats. I've seen that especially in rural areas that unfolds like wildfire and also decimates our bird population too. Thank you.
No, I just, I was going to comment that at some point these organizations, this organization, which I said we'd hear from them again.
And we will hear from them again, I guarantee it, because we always do. That's what you get when you deal with people like that. But at some point, the nonprofit that makes that increase in net assets every year of about a million bucks, their donors at some point should step in and help as well. I don't have any problem with us paying for these services that we're contractually obligated to pay, but at what point do their donors step up? Mr. Elmore said in Berkeley County that they should be doing this and I'm gonna take him at his word. So I'm gonna vote no on this tonight. Thanks, sir.
All right. So we have properly moved it and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposeurs nay?
Nay.
Okay. Who are the nays? Pryor, Moody? Okay. The ayes have it. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
This is the point where before the end of the meeting, I want to publicly say I wasn't accusing Councilman Wehrmann of being anti-Semitic. I was just making that the moral equivalency between Hamas and Israel defending us. I was responding to that. But I would never deprive a councilman of bringing up anything they want, nor do I question his attitudes or sense. I just want to make that clear. I have to look at what my words were. That certainly wasn't my intent wrong. I mean, I disagree strongly on the analogy. That was offensive to me, but not you bringing it up or your beliefs. All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you a lot for that, Larry. I mean, you know, we've talked about this.
Yeah, I mean, I respect you. Thank you for accepting that. I just wanted to make it clear.
All right. We are preparing to leave. Yesterday for the last couple of days, we had through the community services directorate, Powered By Purpose partnered with SCACID and Increasing Hope, Ms. Durant, Ms. Smalls and Ms. Carson put on a wonderful, wonderful conference that built capacity really among our nonprofit community. And we'll talk more about that on Tuesday and thank the council for everything positive that we're doing together.